Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of City of Vader. It's my privilege to call this regularly scheduled Vader City Council meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this April Thursday, the 12th, 2018. I will express appreciation. Our elected council members are all present for the forum. So, let's proceed with our roll call. I invite our city clerk to conduct that.
Judy Costello.
Here.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
And Mayor Ken Smith.
Also present. With that, in full house, let's proceed now with our pledge of allegiance. Would you like all to join us? Jason, turn your turn please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will proceed with the mayor's report. The plan to be as brief and succinct as possible. I attended the Lewis County Commissioner's public hearing last Friday at the mayor's meeting. And it was a three-hour marathon meeting. But the upshot of that public hearing was involving a presentation by several professionals who were involved with public transit. And if you recall, County Commissioner Bobby Jackson came and gave a couple of presentations. It was in furtherance of that. And if you will recall, I think the council expressed positive support for that. So, sitting as an official vote caster on that after the presentation was made, we tell the council that my vote is in favor of further exploration of the feasibility of the transit system, expanding for coverage from Packwood to Riderwood to the southwest and then up through Toledo, Windmawk, and up to Centroya College. And it's circling, it'll be done three times a day.
Wow.
But, and the vote was only one city cast a negative vote, you probably heard it, but it was Napa, by them. They had their reasons, but every other small community was in favor of it. So, what this means is that it's now going to officially be placed on the, as a ballot measure in November. So, now it'll just be, if we're serious about it, we should all strike to drum up support within our respective communities. So, that was the, if you would like additional information, feel free to contact me after the meeting, if it's of inconvenience. I'd like to give an update on the school property. Tonight, being April 12th, represents a historic moment because moments ago, we pushed the send button with the official permit for the Castle Rock schools. All of the drama and challenges that were associated with that project have been overcome. And now, there is nothing standing in the way of them completing the setup phase of that building, which will then be followed by an official ribbon cutting, probably just in time for the school year to close, whatever that means for the preschool. But, there is hooting and hollering going on at the Castle Rock Administration Office, I'm sure. It was good. So, I hope you feel good about it. It was painful, but it was long drawn out, but we've now can move forward. Let's see. Number three, wanted to provide an update on the Fourth of July event. As of this moment in time, there's not been any substantive change on the status of the event. We don't have an individual who's indicated her willingness to light off our fireworks illegally. So, we're at kind of a stalemate as far as that's concerned. We've, in the past, looked into doing it with the professional, they don't deal with Class C fireworks. And their fees generally average, what would say, about $15,000 to fire off fireworks. So, the Castle Rock School District is still willing to allow us to have a Fourth of July event under their authority. But, so, and we've had ideas floated of what if private families brought fireworks and they blasted them off, but it couldn't be a city sanctioned fireworks event. There could be vendors and booths, I suspect, but, so that's where we're at. We still have, what, $3,500 allocated for the possible expenses. So, the council members will have to ruminate on just what you think might be some strategies to deal with that. So, there. But it now is not an agenda item, so I'll just bring you up to date on it.
Will it be an agenda item later?
It can be. It could be next council meeting, if you'd like. I do have the time constraints tonight, just so you know. I have to, I warned Joe, that our mayor pro tem, that I have to leave here at seven, so I'm hoping we can talk fast. But you don't have to do that just because of that. All right. Next item, update on the courtesy notices for code enforcement. You all know that we've embraced the next round of courtesy letters, and we've sent out three of them. And I can tell you, it's gratifying that we've gotten three responses. But they respectfully and civilly have come in and therefore expressed a willingness to cooperate. And, no, in every case, but, and I'm not going to define in my public, the mayor's comment, what cooperate means by definition. But they're responsive, and they are, they're going to work with the city to the extent that they can. So, if you'd like additional information, just let me know, and I'll brief you in greater detail. But I'm gratified by the response. Okay, so, let's see. This is a late notice. As you may or may not be aware, if you've followed the newspapers, there is a big push in southwest Lewis County to expand Toledo high-speed internet, broadband capability. And the entity that has installed that for the City of Toledo, which I don't think you're aware, has been a real boon to them as far as individuals coming in and doing home-based businesses. And there's going to be a public discussion on this topic on Friday, May 4th, if anyone who are interested, at 9:00 AM. And the individual who is spearheading this, who's a former state senator, Kirk Pearson. And he was a representative from our current chief executive, our president, Trump. He's, he represents them, and is the fellow, I think I mentioned, is interested in hearing the community's needs as far as infrastructure development. Appears that his top priority is this broadband installation for tiny little communities like ours. But he's also aware, if you, I'll remind you, that there are other cities who have similar waste treatment and infrastructure needs, and he's aware of that as well. He knows that us and Mossy Rock have that need. And so, he's sensitive to that, and he's so stay tuned. And in fact, that's what led to our presentation, which we're about to hear, from Connie Randles. Connie, forgive me for not acknowledging your presence here. So, there. Now, that is made for 9:00 AM at the courthouse. Yeah. Okay. That concludes the mayor's report. Now, let's turn it over to council members, if you have.
May I ask the mayor to comment on one other item?
Yes.
Could you please comment for me on the building inspector, our last adventure with Chehalis? Has anybody, anything developed?
Oh, nothing has developed on that. Yes.
I did a report on five or six cities, so I, it isn't on the agenda, and I understand that, but I just wanted to hear if you had followed up with that.
No, nothing new. His intent was to call me when they've had a breakthrough. Have you heard anything, Doug? Okay. Then, no, I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Tomorrow. We should have heard within the last week, week and a half. Any other council thoughts or comments?
I have, I do. Go for it, Jason.
We're still gearing up for May Day. May Day is going to be on May 5th. Of course, it's Cinco de May Day. And we're still taking requests for vendors and for people for parade entries, so contact me at the restaurant.
Who are they supposed to be contacting? Somebody put in the paper that it was us, and I was like, I just want to be.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If it's not Jill, you contact me at the Little Crane, and we'll be.
Okay. I've been sending them mostly to Judy, because that's what's been the past.
And that's fine. I'm laying longer, Jessica, so I'm okay.
But if I send them directly to you, then?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm listening.
Sorry, but can you hear, it's a little thick.
Yes, I'm happy to announce that the Toledo marching band is going to join us. I've been here for 10 years and never seen a marching band down the road. So, the street shows.
Nice.
One of many interesting parade things, yeah.
My, when I was in marching band, we always came to the Bay of Mary, so that's good. I was excited.
She said, she said between 12 and 20, she doesn't have a head count yet of.
That's cool. What's a parade about, marching band?
I wonder if Castle Rock would jump in on it.
We have not heard from them.
Oh, really?
They haven't contacted.
Okay.
It's not on the agenda here, but it's, we talked a few meetings back about possibly being some money from the Centroya dump as far as maybe getting some money for a chipper? Have we followed through on that at all? They were doing some grants or some, you remember what the?
Yes, they were looking for ideas.
Yep.
Trying to remember where that ended up. I'll have to look back into it. I don't recall where that ended, but I do remember having that discussion, so.
And I'm, I'm, if somebody has a name for me, I'm more than happy to get ahold of people and find out, you know, if we could qualify or what we would need to do to qualify.
Yeah.
Did you actually read the memo articulating the details of that?
No, we were just in the meeting.
Yeah, we just heard, we just heard about it.
My reflection was, as we went over that, that it was not exactly as we under thought it was going to be. They, I could be wrong on this, but we'll confirm it. We thought that they might be looking for ideas to afford grant money to communities that could use a chipper type of device. But as it turns out, my reflection was that they were looking for ideas that we would submit to them for consideration, but that it wasn't intended to benefit small cities like ours.
Yeah, I don't think it was meant to be a direct grant to the city. The money would still go to the county, but the county would use it to further help the cities in the realm, so.
It was so obtusely indirect that it was not enticing, so we deflated the thing. But that's a reflection. We'll dig into it. I think you'll, you'll see what I mean. Good question.
My turn. Lewis County garbage vouchers will start being available, I think, the 5th of May. I'll have to reconfirm that, but May to September. And as most of you remember, last year, we hauled off 8,000 pounds in one day. So, and those can, if you don't use your voucher, just get ahold of myself or Leona, and we can print those off the computer, and we can use those for community people.
Is that, when I asked them about that, they said that it had to be one per household?
Correct.
And the, and the household person had to be with you?
And they did last year, rode with us.
And they did.
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah, one per household, and the person rode with us.
Okay.
Because they understood our, our whole thing. And then, we contacted the tire recycling through Lewis County, and they're going to be on their website. They have not come up with a date or time. So, I'll report as soon as I know about that, so we can get more tires gone. And then, when is the bathroom and the big park going to be open?
The park board has not addressed that issue yet, but they should. Historically, it's about, about now, I think, well, as soon as it starts drying out a bit, so that vehicles don't get in there and do their donut damage. So, I'm speculating, but.
It's on the agenda for their meeting on Monday, to talk about, when do we want to open it? And typically, in the past, it has been in May, unless it's been extremely dry or something before that.
Could we recommend that they open it by May Day, so people could have a bathroom downtown to use?
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, yeah. It should be before then, anyway.
I'd invite all present to go to that, the park board meeting.
Speaking of the park board, you may want to give your new park board member a quick call or something, because it's quite the young, the beginning, I want to know when the meeting was, because they thought they were supposed to attend. So, if I give them a ring or?
The new one, the new, the new park board?
Yeah. I told them to go on the website or to call City Hall. But you might as well give them a ring.
Very wise. All right. Any other council thoughts? Okay, then, we proceed with the agenda approval for tonight's meeting. I don't have any agenda adjustments noted. Unless anybody else does, we can wait to action.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting's agenda for 4/12/2018.
The motion to approve the agenda is written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now, the minutes approval for our previous city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the minutes for the city council meeting on 3/22/2018.
Okay. Mrs. Hunter submitted a motion, as you've heard, to approve the minutes for the previous city council meeting as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Voucher approvals for the first half of April 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of April 2018 in the amount of $15,718.73.
Okay. Mrs. Costello submitted a motion to approve the voucher totals for the first half of April in the amount noted. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now, our privilege to hear the first of the two reports. I'd like to introduce Ms. Connie Randles.
Yes.
From USDA Rural Development regarding grant and loan options that, that an entity has available for small rural communities like ours. So, Connie, please take the microphone.
I will make this brief, because I know you're under a time constraint. I actually live in Toledo, so I was happy to hear about what you're reporting out on the transit system.
Yes.
Sounds awesome. Anyway, I work for USDA Rural Development, and Kirk Pearson is our new state director. He's my boss's boss.
Did I overstate his affiliation with the president of the?
Yeah, he used to be state senator, and now he was appointed as the state director of USDA Rural Development, so. He still gets called Senator Pearson all the time. It'll take him a few years to figure out who he really is and how he's associated with those. And he's still learning, too, what our programs are and what we do. That's why he brings us all with him. And that meeting that you were talking about for broadband on May 4th, unfortunately, I won't get to be there. It's my birthday, and I'll be in New York City, so I'm, you know, heartbroken that I won't be at the meeting. But that's going to be bringing in our regional, broadband is done out of our region, not out of our office, so that's, I definitely won't talk about broadband, because I don't know anything about it, we don't do it here. But he's bringing in Steve, which is our western region person that does all the broadband. So, hopefully, there'll be, I was hoping to meet him, too, I never have, some really good information on how that works. They're trying to open it up a little more than what it used to be. So, we're hopeful, seems to how, that's kind of the buzzword with the administration right now, opioid and broadband, that, you know, we'll get a few more dollars put towards it, be able to help the communities. Because living in Toledo, I can tell you, we are, we do have awesome internet in Toledo and sometimes in Lewis County, and it really has been a boon for the city, just having that internet there, so the businesses can come and work from home. I definitely support anything we can do to get it out in the rest of rural Washington. Okay, I'm just briefly, I've got handouts for the board, just so you have the programs. I'm just going to touch on our main programs that we have. I gotta keep one, because I gotta have a cheat sheet. Rural Development has over 40 programs. We have business programs, we have housing programs, and we have community facility programs and infrastructure. I've been in housing. I'm currently now working in community infrastructure, and I'm finding, I love it. I love going out to communities and meeting people, and especially because I live out through the rural community, so it's just fantastic. What we do, our main projects that we do, is we have two separate. We have community facilities, which are essential community facilities, which still doesn't really say anything, but we provide direct loan and grant, and direct meaning from the federal government. It's not through lenders, direct loan and grant money through the taxpayer, through us. And community facilities covers a big umbrella. Healthcare facilities, medical clinics, public facilities, town halls, courthouses, anything that's public, fire stations, police stations, support services, childcare, adult daycare, those kind of things, educational museum, libraries, food systems, food banks, food hubs. I mean, there's a broad, it's all considered, infrastructure to support a community. And we have loans and grants. We don't get a lot of grant funding. We get like $150,000 for the entire state, so there's not a ton of grant money there. But there's a little bit, and kind of what those are, we use those more for is like for police cars, for places that don't generate really revenue, you know, fire trucks or fire gear. A little bit of our grant money will go a long way for the rural communities, but our direct loans that we have are up to 40 years, low interest, and sometimes there's grant with that, too. And we work directly with the communities to do it. And anybody, a public body, community-based nonprofit, or federally recognized tribes are eligible to apply for our facilities. So, or for our loans, for the facilities. We, like, so this is a direct program. We also have a guaranteed program. There's some healthier communities out there that can actually afford a little bit to go out to commercial banking, and then we guarantee the loans through the commercial credit, and again, it gives them more buy-in power than they would have without it. So, it's a fantastic program. And to be fast, I'm not going to get into a whole lot of detail. Grant, grant eligibility is based on population and median household income, median household income for your area. So, that's, it all is based on income, and we base that on the most recent 2010 census. And I looked at, pulled up Vader, and you guys are well under the median for the state of Washington. The other part that we do is water and waste environmental programs. This is water system, waste system, storm systems, anything to do with water and waste, the, all the way from a small pipe to an entire water treatment facility or water, wastewater, wastewater treatment facility, which I knew nothing about a year ago, and I now know more about sewers and water than I ever thought I would know. So, it's been an education. I can now spot wellheads and warehouses anywhere I go. Same thing with this, we have the direct funds, we can do, and these ones usually are 40 years, where we can provide, and there's a little more grant money. It can be a combination, loan and grant funding through us, depending on just, you know, the income and the payment ability. And we can go up to 40 years, just based on the life of whatever we're, you know, what waste water treatment plant, a water treatment plant, there's a useful life of 40 years, and then some. A meter, you know, water meters, maybe 20 years, so a loan could only be for 20 years. So, it's all based on that. But again, low interest rates, and we're able to provide more money than usually the commercial lenders can, to be able to stretch what you have further and get more for it. Uh, let me see. Yeah. Even when we, and when we're talking about the funds for wastewater, it's not just the systems, we can pay engineering, various consultant fees. We have a pre-planning grant up to $30,000 that will help the community if they need to do some planning around water and wastewater, and, you know, need to get some of the studies and stuff off the ground. It's a $30,000, up to $30,000, 75 percent, so if it costs you $40,000, you put in $10,000, we could give you $30,000 towards planning on this kind of stuff, which is really great when you don't know where you're at and what you need to do. It sounds like, I think, a little bit in hearing about you guys, that you are doing some improvements, but you're already beyond that point where you, you know what you're doing, and now you're just looking on how you're going to do it.
Yeah, the design is, Greg knows, in the works.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think I've been working with Kathy, and she's awesome with that kind of stuff. And we partner all the time, in fact, talking about Kathy and Commerce. We look for, you know, other funding. We have some big projects that have had four or five funding partners in them, just to bring them together and get them off the ground, so.
Yeah, we told Kathy throughout this presentation, we've kind of agreed that she probably would need to be at this.
She's a little, she's a little further away. Living in, living in Toledo kind of makes it nice, at least for my Lewis County contacts like this, I'm so close to everybody, that during the evening sessions, we're all in here. But I would have never known about the transit, because I can't go to my own city council, because I have to get up so early in the morning that I'm in bed before, before the city council meeting. So, listening to you guys was kind of nice. I know I went through this really quickly, I just want to kind of hit the high points, so you know what we have, and pass out what there is there. If you have any questions, I can answer them. General questions, and here's my card. If you have questions, you can follow up.
I do have a question. I keep hearing how the current administration is, it's set aside $1.7 trillion for federal infrastructure loan and grant programs. Do you sense that you're going to get an increase of fundage for small communities?
I'm kind of limited in what I can and can't say, you know. My understanding, from everything I've read and what I've seen, is they're setting that aside, but it's the funding that's going to come through the states, like the SRF revolving funds, the CDVG block grants, so it's federal dollars, but that money, most of that's going to be coming through the state programs. Because those bigger state programs are federally funded, they're just rambling to state. And that, I think, is where a good portion of that money's coming, you know. We don't have a budget, you know, it's good castle, we still don't even know what our budget is in rural development. And we're, we're doing loans, and they're putting them through, and they're getting funded, but we don't have our, you know, this is how much you get for the year. We just have to keep going to, you know, national office and say, may I please fund, you know, this one, so. So, we don't, we're not even sure what our budget's going to look like for the full fiscal year that's almost over. We just keep taking applications, we keep working with communities. We don't have a, you can apply with us at any time, too. We don't have application periods, it can be done at any time, because we always want to bring it, even if we're not sure of our funding, we always want to be working on applications, so when they say, hey, we've got money, we're, you know, we're ready to hand them, you know, a packet of papers, and say, we're ready to have it, so bring us some money.
Kathy had heard that we're a little ways away from actually going through the actual determined application process. I mean, it'll probably have several funding sources in a package-type deal.
Yeah. And she said you're also, your project is kind of a phased project?
Yes, there are two phases.
Yeah, and it might be that, you know, not all the funding works for one phase, and you use it for another, another phase, so. But, yeah, we all work with each other, too, you know. It's not like you're out there on your own dealing with each. We work, all of the funders work together, too, and talk, and, you know, and get help there, do that. Because there's some things we can fund that they can't, and vice versa, so it gets, we all have our own regulations, which can make it an interesting walk for the folks that are applying, but we try to make it as easy as possible.
Well, it's good to know that we have some local we have a connection with and relationship, too, so. Thank you very much. Any questions?
My one question is, if you come up with any money for a chipper, would you please?
They know what we're talking about. What's the chipper for?
It is for our land recycling area.
Yes. And we're getting ready to clean up. The entire community?
Yes.
The whole community uses it, or do it for the community?
Yeah, our employee would run it. We have a location where that community can bring their limbs, because we can't burn in the city limits. And so, they bring them down there, and then our, every so often, our public works employee would have to chip all of those limbs to keep the pile under control. But we've been able to borrow in the past, the one that the county had, but in the last year or two, they stopped having that available. And so, now, all of a sudden, we have this huge pile and no way to get rid of it.
You know, and that's why I said, that's interesting. I don't know, I honestly don't know, but it'd be worth calling me and giving me all the details, and I know, but it'd be worth calling me and giving me all the details, and I can talk to my folks. And see, it's, even if we could do a little bit of money for grant, we can still only, at the most, would be seventy-five percent, it'd either be forty-five or seventy-five percent of the total cost, you'd have to come up with a piece of the cost. We don't have anything that's a hundred percent grant unless it's our special pre-planning.
We're not talking money, that should be easy.
Yes, yeah, so I, so you, I just, I don't know, I really don't know, because there's really no collateral there either, so it would be all, it would definitely be a grant, if at all possible, but I like these fun little ones, so you know, that I get really tired of, you know, wastewater and sewer, it's, oh, it's fun. To have something a little different, I did a garbage truck, I got excited about it.
We need a chipper.
Yeah, so yeah, give me some details, give me a call, and then I'll run it up my flag post and see what's gonna happen.
If we get it working, it's gonna be a really nice process, because we'll get the branches in, we'll chip them, we'll have compost in the spring, they can come and get compost, and then we'll start the whole cycle all over again, and, yeah, it'll be a great system once we get it moving.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would, if I could, if I can get it to fly, I'd love to, that would be a lot of fun, so, get ahold of me.
Great, thank you very much.
You bet, and please don't take it badly, but I need to go home, so I'm gonna walk out, leave you guys for the rest of your meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. Well, and now we'll turn the podium over to Deputy Cheeseman, who will give us the Lewis County Sheriff's Office reports for March.
March was a, was a busy call month, March really was. So we ended up with three hundred and forty-eight contacts and twenty-six calls, six on shift and twenty off shift, twenty-four traffic stops, and then a couple arrests, a felony arrest and a misdemeanor arrest, and we had three thefts for the month. There were, two of them are just minor thefts, one's gas and some lights, and then we had some firearms that we don't know whether it's theft or missing, but, so.
What is suspicious circumstances? I've been waiting all week to ask you this.
Suspicious circumstances is like people may call on anything that they think is suspicious, but it doesn't fall, it doesn't, it doesn't classify as a crime, so they're like, someone's walking down the road and they think that they're looking at houses, or there might be a door that looks like it's open, something that's suspicious that looks like it might be out of the ordinary, so, but it's not a crime, so.
I have three questions for you, if you wouldn't mind, and if you don't, if you don't know, that's perfectly fine. First off, does the city pay for Enchanted Valley's coverage? Is, are they part of Vader? Do you folks go there?
Yeah, we go there for the county, but they're not, they're not, they're not, none of these calls are incorporated for, they're just what's in the city limits.
Just the city limits is what you cover, okay. If the sheriff is here working on a suspicious call, and a phone call comes in for something else and he has to go racing off, is that time logged in as our weekly amount that we get?
Well, the thing is, is what, what it does is it's, it would be just like you guys had a police officer here in the past, and anytime that there was help needed out in the county, your police officer would go out and help in the county. Well, now we're here, and so anything that happens close in the south end, they go out and handle and help out for whatever needs to be close that's like that. I think the sheriff talked about that the last time that they came down here, that that was the new thing that we were going to do, would be basically, that it's sort of like covering the south end, so if there was something close outside of the city here that was something, or an officer needed help in Toledo, then we would be going, just like, just like an officer would be here if you had an officer within the city.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You had three, seven?
No, no, two's fine.
Oh, okay.
The third one, the third one was kind of answered just now.
Oh, okay. And then I have a couple of questions. You were talking about May Day, if you need extra services on May, on your May Day deal, and I, and I hope that someone got the permit for the, for the parade for, across the highway, so.
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay.
And yes, we have a contact, we went through the sheriff's department, and have a contact person who is providing us with all of our officers, I guess, for...
Who's that?
I apologize, I do not have his name in front of me, but he's been emailing me.
Because I'm the contact with Vader, so. So if you've got someone else, you don't, you don't got the right person.
Well, we went through the, we went through Mr. Saaza.
We need to talk about that some more. We've been having conversation with Anita about that, and that, that really is something that needs to come through and get council approval, and we'll be requesting council approval, so we'll have to talk about that in a little bit.
All right, well, I guess, we'll finish that conversation.
Yeah, because see, because see, we got, yeah, because I got a schedule that I haven't put out yet for May, and I'm ready to put it out, but I only have one shift working that day, so.
Yeah, so we need to talk about that.
So, yeah, whatever you have, that you need to have extra coverage.
Because Anita thought, when I said, "Yeah, you've been talking with Sergeant Cheeseman, right?" She's like, "Yeah, probably, the guy from Vader." I'm like, "Yeah, that, yeah." She's like, "Yeah, that's it." Okay, I assume that that's who she's been coordinating with, but it sounds like it's someone else, so we'll need to talk some more about that.
The, real quick, on the thefts that were going on, were they all, like, one small timeframe?
Yeah.
Because I know that the lights got taken, and then there were three teenagers, early twenties, that were involved in that, because we, they were seen at D Street at the school, but they didn't know what they were doing until after, until the next morning, they saw the mess out there. Trent did.
Oh.
So the people that were, does that make sense?
No, I mean, I don't know the connection between them, I mean, we're talking about two different things, and maybe...
Okay, we'll talk after the meeting.
Okay.
We do have a question from the public, do you want to have it entertained? Go ahead.
The lights was us, and it's not small.
Yeah, yeah, I know that, but it isn't a felony, it's not a felony theft, so it's not the price, it's not the price, a felony theft would be a different theft.
But my question was, if they catch the people, can they, can we get our lights back?
That's, well...
If they didn't bust them up?
Yeah, the, what would happen, and I can't tell you because I'm not, I'm only the law enforcement side of it, but it goes to the court, okay? So now, if they don't have the property, like, whether they sold it, or whether they destroyed it, or whatever, then, then that's where the prosecutor wants a reasonable price to give to the judge, and then the judge sends, whether there's restitution on that aspect. Yeah, so.
Okay, so, but the police department would notify us, wouldn't, wouldn't we have to be there with receipts?
Yeah, yeah, you should, yeah, you'd have to have, yeah, for that, the prosecutor would want something that would say that. And then I forgot one other thing, because I talked with Jill this week, and we are gonna do your HOCS, so if you have vehicle HOCS, the code compliance officer will come down here and take care of that. And we, we did a couple vehicles, and we checked them all out, made sure they weren't stolen and stuff like that. So basically, the HOCS part of it is, is just filling out the paperwork so that they can be processed, and so code compliance will come down and do that.
Well, that's one.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, the good support. Okay, all right, well then, with that, let's proceed in post haste with item number one. Parsons, pretty straightforward, council to consider resolutions, you have a 2018 bank signatories, which I hope you had a chance to look at, what the employee changes and such.
I move to approve Resolution 08-2018, updating the signers of the city's bank accounts as written.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion to approve, resolution is noted. Do we have a second for that?
I will second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. Have any council commentary, additional input? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Council to now consider Resolution 09, 2017, the T E JAGS contract amendment.
Oh, shoot, I should say 2018, I'm sorry.
Of course, well, I...
And it is right on the thing.
It is correct on the paper, okay.
All right, so it is correct on the... I think this is pretty straightforward as well.
They've just asked for more time.
I move to approve Resolution 9, 2018, oh wait a minute, yeah. Authorize the mayor to execute the attached amendment to the service history, contract for removal of the brush and limb file located in wastewater treatment facility with JAGS trucking excavating substantially as written. Yeah, that's all I said, I was in the list all the time.
Yeah, okay, and Mr. Daly has submitted a motion to approve this resolution as he noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any commentary?
I talked with John recently, and a few months back, he had a fire at his yard, and that's where he lost his belly grinder, that the camp he used to use, and so on and so forth. But he's getting it back, or it's being rebuilt, or something like that. So I just thought, on a side note, not with this, but that'll be a, a resource that we might be able to use in the future with, when he has his belly grinder, he might be able to bring it down and do stuff like that too, so.
And we'd like to express disappointment.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
That should've been like my...
Oh, telling ya. Well, I'm being perfectly honest, when I read this, I put it on the floor, and I'm like, "Oh, crap."
That's major disappointment.
Yeah, it was the...
I know, you share, that's a lot of it. Yeah, I share your aggravation, but, you know.
Well, I guess we could look at it in that this will give us a month to speak with, yes, this nice lady and get us a chipper.
That would be, I mean, awesome if you could hold that up.
The positive side.
The positive side.
Maybe it's seven fifty. Okay, then, hearing no other commentary, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Now, item number three, the council wanted to continue the discussion of the matter of pop-up buildings and the open-air market concept. So at the council meeting, we added it to tonight's agenda.
I was supposed to come back with some information.
And so, we invite the city first to share some information.
I don't have a lot of information. I have a little bit of information on the pop-up building. Some of the residents spoke with our building official as well as myself, expressing council's questions and concerns from the last meeting, and he feels like he better understands what it is that you're trying to accomplish with that, and so he said that he wanted to talk to some of his colleagues and some other cities who are dealing with, because it's kind of like a new thing, it's kind of like along the same vein as the tiny houses and that kind of a thing, in his opinion, and so he spent some time out of town and being sick, and he did, he said he did get to talk to some of his people and, or colleagues, and came up with, they're treating that, that situation, just like you guys were saying, like a open-air market. He says the only, he says it's a lot more relaxed regulation, and he says his concern that he's gonna still kind of be sticky about is the electricity. He's concerned about there being electrical cords run and people driving over them with hand trucks, or even vehicles are walking over them and those being worn, and he said they're, you know, in the open-air market type markets or, or whatnot, he says they're required, they can run a single cord from power source, but it has to go into an actual outlet at, at the site, so like when, when you see a farmer's market or whatever, they should be, in order to be legal, running to an actual electrical box is where the power should be plugged, the electrical cord should be plugged into an actual box, so there will need to be a box somehow installed, and, and that's really the only thing that he feels like he needs to be a stickler on. The rest of it, he's not too concerned about, he said, and, and feels like we can come up with some a lot more relaxed regulation, not what he was initially thinking. And so I asked him if he could please put something together that would express exactly what the regulations would be, so that we know exactly what we're dealing with, and he said, "Yes, but it will probably be another week and a half or so," because he has to be out of town for work-related stuff for many days, so, but he's hoping to have it for you by the next council meeting and have some more specific regulations as far as, as, as what would be expected. So are you guys okay with that? Okay?
So that sounds a lot like what I was talking about with the spider boxes, like at fairs and stuff like that.
And, and I may not be expressing it exactly correctly, I don't understand all that technical terms and stuff, so that's why I said, "Will you please write this down and provide it to us so that we can actually see what you mean?" So.
Yeah, okay. We have a comment from the public.
Question, is it gonna be required we have electricity if we use one of these pop-up open-air?
No, just if you want electricity, it will be required to go into a special box or something, but you don't have to have electricity. It's just if you want it.
So.
I'm sitting very quietly, as everyone noticed.
I can kind of feel the heat.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Doing a little more.
I'm, I'm being polite, okay?
And safe, this is good. Okay, so you've heard positive, I think, I feel good about it. So should we continue the discussion when we get definitive guidelines? Okay, a week and a half, or with the next council meeting?
I, I think that we can move forward though, without electricity.
Yeah, without electricity.
I mean, if that's our only thing, if you, if someone has a building that they want to do something in without electricity, then I think they should be able to not wait for us to get that section of it done, to whatever extent that is.
If that box has to be placed in, does that mean a permit and all kinds of...
I would assume it does, but the permits for electricity are done through the state, not through the city.
The, the boxes that he's more than likely referring to, that I deal with at every event I go to, a lot of them are, they're either a spider box, which the main cord comes into, and then it has plugs, GFI plugs all the way around it, or it's an actual panel. Hollywood Lighting brings out a panel that has plugs on the side of it, and it has, it's just a breaker box on, on wheels, and they bring it out, set it up, the wire goes, the main goes in, and then we can tap in off of one of those leads. So, more than likely, that's what I would think he's referring to, which isn't, it's...
Well, we'll have to find out.
Yeah, and it's an extension cord with a box at the end of it, is basically what it is.
But if you can't have an extension cord laying across the grass, there's a problem.
Well, so, so for the fair industry, it can go, it can go across the grass as long as it's not in a traffic area, and if it is in a traffic area, then they have these mats that have a whole bunch of things that flop over them, and so you lay it down in that, but for instance, there's one in town, that should be able to run just right around the backside of it and be fine without, as far as I...
Well, I guess, we'll see.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good question. Another comment?
Question, so long as the, the issue of electricity is not considered, would county, what do you call it, codes, be sufficient to, to cover any temporary buildings, trailers, so long as they meet county codes?
Anything that happens in the city has to meet the city codes.
Right. County doesn't have enforcement or code implications for our community, we're following the state guidelines, so, anyway, you could get clarity after the meeting if that would like. So, anyway, you could get clarity after the meeting if that would like. Sounds to me like there's progress can be made if there is individuals interested in the development of that enterprise. So, my sense is the council is supportive of that.
And if an individual would want to have more specific, for sure, before the next council meeting, we can make contact with him directly about a specific item, rather than just a phone, you know?
So invite the members of the public.
So I'm just inviting any individual to come in and talk to us at City Hall and we'll make a phone call together and see if we can't get some of the stuff resolved that needs to be known before the next council meeting.
Case by case basis. And duly noted as matter of public record.
Yes.
So, any other council comments? And I have number three. Hearing that, then let's jump quickly to number four. This would continue the discussion that I think was begun at our last council meeting on the commercial zone slash home occupation enterprises, home-based businesses. So I would turn the conversation over to the council.
Is it okay if I give you the information that I was tasked with researching? Okay, so what you're gonna find in this little packet, I spoke with the city planner about this idea about having private residences being used as possibly a retail location on a small scale of some kind, like a home industry is what he called it. He says, he says, yes, absolutely. I don't see why, if the city wants to do that, that they couldn't do it. We were trying to find some information. There's a couple of samples from other communities. We have one from Pierce County about home occupations and something from Vancouver, the city of Vancouver, also about home occupations. Now, please note that some of the things in there won't apply to our situation, but they're just giving you some ideas of what some verbiage looks like. And Mr. Cooper, our planner, felt that there were several things that you would want to be aware of and to really be thinking about when you, if you're gonna make this type of change. The key things are noted here in this first page. Parking, how much do you want to require or how little do you want to restrict it to? Signage, do you want someone to be able to put up a humongous lighted sign in the residential district? You know, those kind of things. Density, how many in one small area? Do we want to limit it to how many on a block or do we want to leave that wide open? Frontage improve, anyways, you see all my notes there. Frontage improvements, the hours of operation could be set as a, as a city standard. The buildings, how much of a building or any additional buildings would be allowed in a residential district to be part of the business? Environmental health and health codes, some, he says, just that's something that you might want to talk with the county about, what kind of, you know, regulations might, you need to be aware of. Would you want to require insurance as part of your business license? And also the effects of increased traffic. So, whether it's deliveries to the retail locations or pickups from the retail location. So just things to discuss and think about that you probably want to address in some form or another in the regulations. He says, basically, all you would have to do is rewrite what's allowed use in a certain zone in the residential district for a home occupation. And so, I included at the very back what our home occupation regulations look like now. And that should be the last two pages that you have, so you can see what ours look like now and some ideas of what some other communities look like. And then, you can kind of compare and come up with. So he said, if you guys come up with, if the council were to come up with kind of the parameters of what you want and kind of put some verbiage together, then we could, he could take it from there. He and the city attorney would have to sit down and write it properly, so it's written legally. And then, it would have to go through approval through the Department of Commerce, but that's required for any development regulations, so.
Probably need a public hearing or two.
It may trigger a public hearing. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So it's probably, you know, once you get the verbiage written, it's probably a three to six-month process to get, to get the whole update and change done, so.
It would be pretty dramatic development for the community.
I think it is forward-thinking. That's my new terminology for forward-thinking.
Have a question?
Sure.
Mike, the man across the way from me, he was thinking about bringing big rigs into his little area. Now, I wouldn't want that in my street. We'd have to have that, we'd have to bring it up to the general public, what type of businesses are we talking about? We're not built to have traffic on our city streets.
No doubt.
Mike, do you have the city of?
All I got was this. Is this from you? Oh, okay.
Were you afraid to open it?
No, I was like, okay, I wonder who it's from?
Oh my, oh my, I just assumed you'd not.
Yeah, I figured it was. I figured, that's why I was tapping on it. I'm like, you. This was Toledo's?
Uh-huh, that's Toledo's.
This is, yeah, so I can.
And theirs was pretty simple, not near as, you know, detailed as everything, but for a small community, they.
It almost covered all of these.
It does.
No kidding.
You know, and then again, and then again, you know, we can throw in all kinds of restrictions or that kind of thing on it. But Michelle said that was, that worked really well for them and it's pretty simple.
Yeah, so.
It appears to be, I didn't make copies for everyone, I just made it for you and stuck it in the envelope.
Did you want me to read it? Did you want me?
Could we continue the discussion at our next council meeting as we talk with our planner? Give that.
Yes, I'd like to read it.
Yes, I wanna read it.
So you'll make copies and we'll continue it at our next council meeting.
So as I was sitting at my computer thinking about this, and I think I mentioned it last time, I would love to see like a kiosk board downtown where all of the information from all the businesses were on there, that they could get a map and, let me just pass this down, this is something I threw together real quick. Little Falls Community Mall of merchants located throughout the town, the city of Vader. And that's Squim's map that they have for their stuff, but I just.
Don and I kind of researched a little idea. There was a small little sign about this big and everybody that is involved, each had that sign, which gave you another indication that they're part of.
Part of the.
That.
Yeah.
So, that's cool.
It's intriguing, very intriguing, forward-thinking. All right. Well, then, we've made the decision to continue this.
Later.
Conversation. All right, and I would. I'm gonna have to bail, unfortunately. But we'll start, item number five, continued council discussion on sewer waivers for special projects. You recall, we were going to do some research and crunch some numbers.
Me?
Oh, no, I'm saying, was this, was this Mike's, the sewer project special? Yeah, this was Mike's question.
Yes, so we've been, we agreed that we'd put it on this agenda and Jill was gonna crunch some numbers to see what financial impact.
Summertime watering, pressure washing.
Oh, okay. I was totally, I'm like, wait, what? I don't remember this. Okay, perfect, all right, yes.
Vaguely worded. And while having reached that council discussion item, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to our mayor pro tem, and I will dismiss myself, but I'd be most eager to hear the outcome of that. And then, we won't forget the public hearing or the public comment at the end. So it'll be okay to write in there. Thank you all for being here. Thanks for doing well. We keep going. So I'll turn the council discussion over to Mike, if you want to run with it. And Jill, I know you have a report on some rough assessment, if you're brave enough to share it.
Well, I haven't had the time to do as much detailed research as I would want. If I had a gun to my head, my rough estimate would be one to $2,000 difference between adding another billing cycle to the waiver. I'm sorry, maybe I need to refresh. Last time you guys asked me to look into what would be the difference in the revenue for the year if we included an additional billing cycle in, in, use, because we have two billing cycles right now that we use for the summer, that we use the winter rates instead of what their actual usage is in the summer. And the question was if we added an additional billing cycle to that to make it three billing cycles instead of two, what would be the revenue loss to doing that? And, like I said, I haven't been able to take the time to do all the detailed research on it, but my estimate would be one to $2,000, probably closer to the $1,000 range would probably be what the revenue would be lost if we did that, if we extended it. That's my estimate. That's all I have for you on that. How many people actually come into City Hall and say, I'm filling a swimming pool, I'm gardening? I mean, I don't garden, so. This is just something we do for all the residents. We don't.
So my, so my bill is supposed to reflect a difference?
Yes, it already does. Your June, July, and your August, September bills already reflect the reduction.
I wonder what call, because I went through mine trying to figure out that and I couldn't really find where.
So I'd be happy to show you a report. I mean, each person's is different, because the computer will individually look at each account and we tell it which months, we tell which, right now, it's nine months out of the year, the nine winter months. We say, average those usages, average your consumption for that time. And then, whatever that average is, is what I want you to bill for this billing cycle.
My, I couldn't tell either and I had one gal asking about it and I told her, I really didn't know, but I'd look at mine and see if I could figure it out and I couldn't figure it out. So I'll have to come in and have you show me, so I.
Yeah, on your, on the actual bill that comes during that time, I don't think it shows on there what the difference is. It only shows on my billing reports that I run. It doesn't show on your bill that comes through, it doesn't tell you, this is what you actually used and this is what you're being billed for. It doesn't, it's not.
So the fact that it made eleven go way up in the summer months is, is what you go by?
Yes. But I can, if you come in, I have all the reports. We can look back over the months and say, this is what you actually used last year during this billing cycle and this is what you got billed. This is what you actually used, this is what you got billed. Are your bills that come out, I know you would never know if, if, the only way you could know is if you compared what your water consumption bill was to your sewer consumption, because you do get a consumption report on your sewer bill and on your water bill and you would see what the difference is.
Okay, I'll, I'll tell you.
For that same billing cycle. Because, because what the water bills use, the actual usage, and what you got billed in the sewer will be less.
Okay.
So. And if for some weird reason, your winter average ends up being more than what you actually used, you would get, we, we go in and override that and make sure that you get charged the lesser of the two. So, it's really a pain in the rear to do the billing, but, but we do it and we check each account and try to make sure it's accurate, so that you get the lowest bill possible.
I can tell her to come in and you could go.
Absolutely, we could go over.
Schedule a time that you.
Yeah, absolutely, we could sit down and pull the reports and show her. Yeah, anybody who wants to see.
I know, I'm supposed to know all of that. I tried to figure it out.
Yeah, unfortunately, your report, your bill that you get doesn't really tell you that, what the difference is. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm sure a lot of people don't realize that that's what's happening, so.
They probably don't, we should probably make that public to everybody, so that they are aware that that's something that City Hall does for them, even though they don't maybe realize that.
Another one of those, um. Put it in the newsletter that comes out with your sewer bill. If anybody reads it, I don't know if they read it, but we put it in there, yeah.
It is put in there?
I said we could.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure we have in the past. I don't know that we have always done it, but we definitely.
Maybe when the, when it comes, I still like the idea of bumping it back a couple months. I do, myself, just because a lot of people are already starting to pressure wash and starting to clean mainly. And so, that would affect, would affect them. And we want, we, obviously, we want people to pressure wash and clean and in the great Northwest, it's a necessity.
You don't like molding moldu and moss and?
Just on my face. So.
I don't have any comment about this.
I think it's a little overreach, myself.
I haven't noticed mine at all. Mine is the same, all the way across the board, all twelve months. It seems like my amount doesn't go up, doesn't go down.
Well, if the difference between your winter and your summer months is, in the winter, you use 5,000 and in your summer, you use 7,000, you're not gonna see a difference because they're both under that 9,000 gallons. So you're always gonna get wronged. So, you wouldn't. But if you, in this, in the winter, if you use 8,000 and in the summer, you use 15,000, you would see a difference, because you wouldn't get all those overages that are over 9,000 gallons, so.
What do you mean, Jason, by overreach? Or is that what you said?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I mean, start having waivers for people to pressure wash their house and wash their cars and things like that. It's kind of an overreach. I think people are gonna pressure wash their cars and, or their houses and clean no matter what. And it's not, I don't think it's that much of a, an expense to really, it's just part of life, you know? I think we're pretty fair on, on the water bills and as far as like how we, we do the water billing. I think it's, I think it's really fair. So, that's my, my opinion. I don't need, I don't think we need to roll it back. I think it works good.
I wasn't thinking about waivers, so like, I don't know where that came from, but I wasn't, I didn't like the idea of coming in and saying, hey, I'm gonna wash my car or I'm gonna do this or do that, because that just gets busy for, for everybody.
Sure.
But I, the reason I brought this up is because a citizen came to me and said, you know, I washed, I pressure washed my house this time last year and it cost me an extra 30 bucks. And I was like, holy smokes.
Oh, that's cost water.
Yeah, because it was water and sewer, is what she said.
I do two buildings a year, the garage and the house, and it doesn't seem to change a whole lot. And I'm gonna go with Jay and say that that's probably the cost of life.
You have a question from the audience? Should I take it? Yes?
Yes.
I was gonna say, I fortunately don't have sewer. But my water bill, I mean, I pressure wash and think, I mean, you don't do that every day. My bill, my water bill doesn't go up. I mean, it just doesn't. I don't garden either, but, you know, that's probably, I think people who do gardens would like a break more on the sewer bill than.
You're a single person, though. If you're looking at a family, they're right up to that, almost to that top anyway, so if they do anything extra, and then they get this sewer overage charge, where I had to come in and ask Jill, so I knew my husband was full of crap, but this is ridiculous. An overage charge on my sewer bill? I didn't realize that you were connected like that.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't, I have septic up on 10th Street, everybody's septic up there, but I still, my water bill, you know, I don't think anybody pressure washes every day. So I don't, I don't see that as even a problem, unless maybe you have sewer. I don't know. I don't have to worry about that. I think it's more toward gardening, that the water, your, your water and sewer bill would go up significantly in the summertime. would go up significantly in the summertime.
Any further discussion?
So we're just leaving it the way it is?
I'm going to vote to leave it the way it is.
A vote?
Uh, excuse me, I suggest, I suggest that we leave it the way it is.
A non-vote.
It wouldn't bother me to add an additional, a little additional time to, especially when we, our summers exceed out a little bit farther. I wouldn't mind having a little extra time there with the lower water rates. Not that I ever use that much water, but who knows? I may. I'm going to have garden this year, so who knows?
You said it's June through...
It's the June and July bill and the August and September bill.
So June, June through...
June through September.
September are the balanced out.
The months that give the reduced rates, yeah.
So if we bumped it, it would actually have to go two months, yeah?
Yeah, because we only do two-month cycles. So it'd either have to go two months, so October, November, or you'd have to do it two earlier months, April, May.
Which rains, April, May, and it rains in October, November, so...
Yeah, that might not work out then, Mike.
So, it is what it is.
Okay. That is the last of the official agenda. However, we do have public comment.
Can I clarify, we're agreeing to drop this topic then? Doesn't need to be on the agenda anymore?
I would like to see it in the newsletter, Bill.
Oh, the notice about that?
The notice, yeah.
Make sure folks know.
So that people understand how it is.
And maybe on the website, and just, just to get it out there. I'm good with that.
Maybe they can adjust their schedule.
Like billing cycles, what the...
Thank you. I'm sorry, you guys...
Public comment, please.
Mr. Williams is the only one signed up for public comment.
Due to the way that some people have been treated due to the Fourth of July celebration, the Masonic Lodge will decline to host a parade. That was, I had said we would do it, but now the situation has changed, so we're, we now have declined to host it.
That was the last public comment, correct? The meeting is adjourned at 7:14 PM.